I would like to call to order this Manona City Council meeting of Monday, November 18th, 2013. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Speight.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Holquist.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Miller. Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the October 21st and also the October 30th, 2013 council meeting?
No approval.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All corrections, deletions, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. This is the appearance section. Again, if anyone would like to address the council, please just hand Alder O'Connor the slips. And I'm pleased to introduce our first guest this evening, Ms. Catherine Dahl.
My mom.
Oh, that's Chris. I'm sorry. It's Chris Toll. Chris and Manny Toll are here this evening to speak on the subject of Manny's grandmother, Catherine Dahl. Welcome.
Thank you.
And if you can kind of slide over there, that would be great. So we see you on TV, Manny.
So what Manny's gonna do is he's gonna hold a picture of his grandma that we're talking about. So you can see the picture. You're holding the picture. Okay. So, all right. Well, we came to give some donations. My mom passed away last month, which has been extremely difficult, but she is one of those people that probably could have done a commercial for Manona. She raised 12 kids in Manona, six girls and six boys. She lived here. She moved, built a home here in 1954. And this is what she'd say about Manona. Well, we're here to honor Manny's grandma and my mom. She loved Manona because her beloved and magnet hearted Mary Catholic Church was here. And having 12 kids, she needed that church. Having 10 middle children, yeah, I get that. The Manona Library was her love of her life, because after all, she had 12 kids, she didn't have time to read a book. But after everybody was out of the house, that was her home away from home. The Manona Senior Center was a wonderful place for her to go. It took her probably 10 years before she'd go. That's why one of our donations tonight is for the senior center. So I'm hoping that if anyone's listening that's a senior, if they haven't been to the senior center, that they would go, because it's such a great place. In fact, when my neighbors, my mom's neighbor passed, the husband passed away, my mom brought her to the senior center. And so I was getting emails from the family saying, "Thank your mom for taking our mom to the senior center," because it gave her an outlet and gave her friendship, which is, we think is great. Manona's the best place to live, because after all, we have, this is my mother speaking, we have the memorial parade, we have the Manona fireworks. Manona was smart enough to have a municipal pool before anybody else. The list goes on and on. And for those of you that ever listen to cable TV, she loved watching the football games on cable TV. And if you ever listened to them, at the end of their broadcast, they would say, "Goodnight, Mrs. Dahl, wherever you are," because she was always listening to Manona cable sports. And then, last but not least, she had three kids and playtime production, so guess what? She was housed in Manona. Opening night was in Manona, so everything she needed was in Manona. So on behalf of my mother, Catherine Dahl, we have a donation for the Manona Library. And we also have a donation for the Manona Senior Center. And we're hoping other people that see this will think about that as they, you know, pass on that, what a wonderful place we have, and that possibly other people, you know, might think about that in their wills to give to the, to Manona. So we just want to, on behalf of our mother and all 12 children and 40 grandchildren and 36 great-grandchildren, would like to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you did a good job, man. Yay. Okay, thank you.
Now we can balance that budget, so all is good. And I just wanted to make sure, are the scouts speaking tonight or participating, or are they observing?
Well...
You have to come up to the microphone. And introduce yourself to, so your mother knows.
I am the SPL of Scout Troop 146 here at St. Stevens Church. And we're just here to observe for our citizenship and the community merit badge and hope we learn a few things from this council meeting.
You'll learn a lot. If you ever want to know how sausage was made, you'll see that tonight, so welcome. And if you have any questions, ask somebody smarter than me, so, thank you. All right. Again, we do have a number of appearances and statements regarding tonight is the public's ability to comment on the mayor's proposed budget, which will not be approved tonight. Oh, is there any? Okay. Is there, is there anyone here that wasn't here to speak about the budget? All right, I didn't think so. All right, then we will officially open the public appearances section to discuss, or the public hearing to receive public input regarding the proposed 2014 operating budget. So I don't have these in any order. And please, anyone who cares to speak, if you would come to the podium, because we have a huge audience viewing this on Manona Cable. So first I have Randy Birchfield, 1123 Pocahontas Drive, would like to register in favor of the 2014 police budget. Meaning wanting the 20th officer, Randy? Is that what you mean when you say the police budget? All right. Donna Birchfield, 1123 Pocahontas, also would like to register in favor of the 2014 police budget with the 20th officer. Gerald Zeitseus, 5718 Tecumseh Avenue, would like to register in favor of the 20th police officer. Mark Provenzano, 4,222 Winacoa Road, would like to register in favor of the new police officer, the 20th position. Laura Solinger, 5102 Maywood Road, would like to register in favor of the 20th police officer. Steven Nitzel, 403 Shado Lane, would like to speak in favor of the community officer, in support of the community relations officer. Steven?
I checked the wrong dots, but I don't have to speak.
But you would like to? Okay. We're really rocking and rolling, so somebody needs to say something up here.
The only thing I wanted to say really was...
Could you say, re-say your name, please?
Steve Nitzel, 403 Shado Lane, Manona, Shado.
Shado.
So I'm just, I'm here to offer my support for the 20th officer, the community relations officer. I think it serves a very relevant role in our community with regards to the communication that's offered to our residents regarding things that are actually happening on the streets, which, you know, we as homeowners don't always see, because we may be away at work or whatever. But it is, it is a link that I think is important to our community, so, thank you.
Thank you. We have Marcella Simmons of 6,011 Winacoa Road would like to register in favor of keeping the 20th police officer. We also have Mr. Quentin Simmons of 6,011 Winacoa Road would like to register in favor of keeping the 20th police officer position. We have Branda Wykes, 6,011 Winacoa Road, would like to register in favor of keeping the community relations officer. And we have Camille Simmons of 6,011 Winacoa Road, who would like to register in favor of keeping the relationship, or the community relations officer. Where's Dad tonight? Working. Kimberly Heine would like to register in 507 Greenway Road, would like to register in favor of keeping, keeping the community police officer. Susan Manning of 1108 Nishushan Trail would like to register in favor of the additional police officer. Kevin Pellerin, I hope I pronounced that right, 5105 Wallace Avenue, didn't mark anything. Kevin? I assume you're in favor...
He decided yes.
Okay, keeping.
The 20th officer.
All right. I'll register. Did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Okay. Keeping the 20th officer. Kristen Pellerin of 5105 Wallace Avenue, also, also in favor. Good, no discord in the household tonight. And finally, unless there's some other slips, Michael Millman's, 5800 Winacoa, would like to register in favor of the community liaison officer, keeping the 20th police officer. Is there anyone else who would like to register to comment? Anyone wants to talk about snowplows or cable citizens, anything else? If not, thank you, everyone, for making the turnout. It's appreciated, and your voices are important to the process. There's not anyone else who would like to speak? I will declare the public hearing section closed. There is no consent agenda this evening. Moving on to unfinished business, there is none. New business tonight. Item A is consideration of 2013, 2014 Class B liquor or Class C wine and Class B fermented malt beverage license applications for Schrestha Family LLC owned by Madame Schrestha, designated by the Swad Indian Restaurant. I hope I'm saying that correct. Is it Swad?
Swad.
Swad, yep. A new restaurant that I'm happy to say is going up at 6,007 Manona Drive. The owner is Madame Schrestha of 754 Odana Lane in Madison. Would you care to address the council in terms of your request? Or we can refer to Alder Wood, who is the chair of the alcohol review?
I could, well, I could get started and then see if council members have questions for him, and we could come up then. So this, you'll notice it's on the agenda as two separate license applications. One for a Class B liquor license, meaning a full liquor license. Alternatively, he's also applied for a Class C wine and a Class B fermented malt beverage license. So this was, the Class B liquor license was recommended for approval by license review committee. And if you look in the packet, we have, the only license of these types that there's a quote on by the state are the Class B liquor licenses. We can have 19 under state statute. We currently have 17 Buffalo Wild Wings, doesn't count against the quota, because it's a full-service restaurant with over 300 seating. So that's kind of some context of it. The committee did consider a number of factors. You know, one of the things I think was expressed in the, must have been expressed elsewhere, but was also in the strategic planning surveys, was a desire for more dining options, finer dining options. And that this would be part of making this more likely to be a successful operation. I guess I'd throw it open for council members to have questions for me or for Mr. Schrestha that he could answer.
I would have a couple of questions, Mr. Schrestha, if you don't mind coming to the podium, please.
And sincerely, we look forward to having another dining opportunity in Manona.
Having not attended the plan commission meetings, could you just give an overview of the layout of your restaurant and the seating, the capacity? And obviously, it's an Indian restaurant by cuisine, but anything else that you would want to share about your facility?
About the zoning permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, the zoning permit is posted last week, on, I said, last month, about second week of the October. So I forgot to bring the layout, how we lay out for the construction, the kitchen wood...
How many seats will you have?
Well, around 55 to 60 seat would be.
And Alder Wood outlined that they approved both types of, the concept of either license. How important does one license over the other, as explained? We have two liquor licenses left.
Yes.
And some major projects forthcoming.
Exactly.
So if that wouldn't happen, what's the impact on your business if it would be a beer and wine?
Yeah, the reason I applied the both of them, because Indian restaurant is a kind of international fine dining restaurant. Some of the Indian foods go with the cocktail, mixture cocktail, so signature cocktail. So that's the reason I would like to make you our patron customer, is more experience, more happy place. So other things, we do have Indian beer and Indian wine as well from India. So that's the reason I would like to have both of them, liquor, if I put a liquor and some curry and some tender special and a combination head. So I've been in Madison more than 12 years. I run the very successful business in Odana Road outside of Madison. It's called Maharaja. Probably some of them, because my guests been here there too. So I have very good experience. So the reason I'm trying to do both of them, because liquor go with some signature food with the drinks. And then I have, we have some Indian, you know, Indian beer and Indian wine as well. That's the reason I really like to have both of them.
And when is your hopeful completion date, opening?
Opening day, I'm planning to, opening a meet up December. So because of, you know, I took all the empty place. It was, previously it was occupied by the bank space. So plumbing and all the electrician, all the heat, kitchen wood system, it takes a little longer time to, you know, get together. That's the reason I would like to open before the Christmas or New Year time, if you go to nearly...
Further questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Again, this is the first reading, so in two weeks, the final decision will be made at that point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, and good luck. Next, we have item 2B, consideration of resolution 13-11-1946, providing for the sale of $650,000 of taxable general obligation promissory notes. Mark, this was brought forward at Personnel and Finance tonight, and the finance director asked that this be starred this evening, and I'll let him explain why first, and then we'll see if anyone would so move.
This is, has to be starred, so Jeff Bhalangi, our financial advisor, can start negotiating with the bondholders. Basically, this is a taxable note related to a developer's agreement with Fairway Glen. They'd finished a project, so they'll be asking for their money fairly soon here. So this is to go out and borrow this money and pay off the developer's agreement that we signed a year ago. It is taxable, so there is going to be just a tidy bit, a higher interest rate than you would on a non-taxable, but that's, that's the legal, and we can get around that.
Would anyone care to move to take this out of order?
Some move.
Second. Alder Thomas. Alder Wood, second motion to take this out of order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Some move.
Is a motion, is there a second? Motion is second. Further discussion? Any questions? You can see we have a number of these, so. Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas? Aye. Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Speight?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holquist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, consideration of resolution 13-11-1947, providing for the sale of $9,910,000 of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, again, being brought forth by the finance directors. This is why I needed you to be the mayor. That's a lot of money, so. So Mark?
Yes, this is, again, this is related, this is refinancing related to TIP 5. This is the Garden Circle project. This was the purchase and land, developer's agreement, demolition, all kind of rolled up in one right now. Right now, we have a current five-year band on this, which that means it's basically a short-term note, a five-year note, where we're just paying interest right now. And with the current market conditions, it goes up to 2015. So with the current market conditions and just trying to start to make some principal payments, Jeff, it was Jeff's recommendation with where the market's at right now, that we go ahead and refinance this. This one right here. So that's, so that's what he wants, he wants to start negotiation with bondholders on this.
Again, you'll have ample opportunity to review this as approved.
Yeah, the way it works is...
This is just to give him permission to start talking.
Jeff will go back out, Jeff will go back out, start talking to the bond like he does, and you go out, well, now he has access to negotiate with them. They'll negotiate and come back. If the rates are something you agree with, don't agree with, we don't have to accept what he comes back with. So if he turns back, we don't like what he has, we can turn it down and have him go back out there again, or we can take what he has. But he'll have those at the next meeting.
So would someone care to star this? Alder Bussie?
And I think for the scouts tonight, typically, new business is, when something comes before us, it's under the new business category, and then it comes back a second time, so that the public has a chance to have their input into it. So if we act on something immediately, we have to suspend the rules and take it out of order. So I move to suspend the rules and take it out of order.
Is motion is second, suspend the rules, take this item out of order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
This motion is second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Speight?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, consideration of resolution 13-11-1948, authorization of the redemption of taxable general obligation promissory notes dated August 30th, 2010, brought forth by the finance director. Mark?
Yep, this is just more legally, we have to follow this process for refinancing this Garden Circle loan. The bond counsel, so we need to have this resolution on there so they can redeem this note. So it's just a basic formality, just to follow the proper IRS rules. So this is kind of what this is brought for, but it's related to basically the number E, or number C, the $9.9 million. It's just a requirement, meaning it must fulfill.
Is there a motion, suspend the rules?
Some move.
Is motion, suspend the rules, take this item out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
Is motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wow. Scouts have come every year. This is the quickest. You picked the right meeting tonight.
So far.
We're not done yet.
So far. So it all depends on how patient you want to be, but... Oh, we have the big one. Yep, that'll go quick. Item E, which is consideration of resolution 13-11-1945, which is adopting the 2014 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. This is brought forth by the mayor. And at the last, we had committee of the whole meetings. And what committee of the whole meetings are, is the council gets together with all the departments that are here this evening, and they make their presentation as to what they would like to see in the budget. And whatever gets approved in the budget is what your parents and grandparents will be taxed for. So this is a pretty important part. So what happens, again, as Alder Bussie said, this is new business, so we'll discuss the budget if people want to tonight, and then in two weeks, we will approve the budget. And in the meantime, I made a recommendation as to what I think the budget should be, but, and then all the departments got to comment on that and have their input, but then all the council members get to comment if they like what I did or they don't like what I did. They can change that budget. So over the next two weeks, the budget may be adapted by some of the council members. So, Mark, do you want to just do for our audience?
Yeah, I don't have...
Nope, nope.
Just highlights and...
Highlight the budget?
As I know, everybody was kind of, this is the mayor's budget, what he's presenting, and I saw a lot of the comments before from the appearance, it was about the 20th officer. That currently isn't in the budget right now, so that was proposed by the mayor. So that's currently what's in there, just so I understand how that works. But property tax levy increase right now, based on everything we have, is $19,421 or 0.34 percent increase, so less than one, less than a half percent increase. Total property tax overall, though, is $5.6 million. There is, in the state, we have a levy limit, which is 1.44 percent. We can increase our levy limit, too, which is a total, we can increase by $80,000. Debt service is not subject to the levy limit. The debt service increase is $36,000. The non-debt service stuff, which is all the operating costs in there, has a decrease of $17,431. So we have available, basically round up to almost $98,000. If you want to go to the levy limit, that's the difference we have right there. So we have, set that back. The property tax will increase 0.01 percent, and that's basically rounding to, or 0.14 percent increase, so less than 2 percent, 0.2 percent. If you have a house, and the average house, assessed house, it was right around 240, and last year was around 230. So if you stayed roughly the same from this year to last year, based on your assessments, the city portion only would be an increase of $8. So that's just the city portions. We also want to get your tax bill, you have every other district in there, so you have the school, MATC, the county, and the state, so. But if you just look at the city and kind of figure it out, it's about an $8 increase. Total expenses increased from 2013 of 2.76 percent, so we kept under a 3 percent increase. It's kind of the big numbers. I don't know if you want to go into kind of the details of why the increases were, or...
Unless there's somebody here with a specific question, no, I think we've perused that and we'll have another chance. I just wish they could have heard that, they could go tell their parents, only $8. That's the message I'd like to leave with. The one question I have, has anything, have you caught any, did we miss anything from this document from committee of the whole?
We went through, and there's just a couple of minor changes.
Anything that the council needs to know?
No, just what we talked about the last meeting. There's going to be one for overtime, and then there's one for... There's going to be one for overtime, and then there's one for, um, I forget. Professional development we talked about, so there's a couple of things. And as far as the park budget that was kind of talked about, I was talking to Jake, we're going to stay with the proposed budget, just because we worked it out with him, what we thought the part-time wages were in the overtime, or just with the wages, that it's basically the same budget, and this part-time number was a little bit higher, based on the current trends and based on the hours they worked, that the number that was originally proposed was a good number. So we're going to stay with the original number in the book that you got.
Alder Bussie?
So when you say original number, that would be the number that Dan presented?
Correct. Sorry, yep.
And then, would any of the department heads care to add anything?
I think there was a request for some explanation on the Muffin project, and we have Jaren here, our IT consultant, and maybe you could add some stuff, Janine, on the Muffin project, which is the fiber optic network that was recently installed in the city of Manona?
Good evening. Now, what I'm passing out is an edit to the IT operational budget highlights, that there was one handed out at the committee of the whole, and this is just some additional information that's been added to that. And essentially, it speaks to a lot of the questions on the Muffin network. The first page, I've starred things I've added. The second page and the third page are two diagrams, which are some options that we've been investigating for completing the Muffin network and taking full advantage of the services that are available. And on the last page, is the recommendation given to us by the strategic plan consultant, who is specializing in IT. So the, the top item where the arrow is, is what they had recommended for the Muffin budget. Short description, the two options we've been looking at. They offer different degrees of services for the city, and I know there were questions at the committee of whole that we wanted to speak to. And with that, we had recommended option B, which is a city network. Option A is more of an expanded network, taking advantage of other locations throughout the city of Madison, and I think-
Can you explain why you went with B?
The initial reason for going with option B is that we don't have all of the answers yet. The Muffin network is still getting established, as far as consortium, who will be maintaining it, and what the monthly and annual fees will be. This is based on the information I have directly from the folks that have designed the network, and they have cautioned me that, you know, this is, it's still evolving, but this is a really good start, this is a good starting point.
We can get to B at any point in time that we would so desire.
That is correct. Do you want anything to add to that, Jaren?
I think the main reason why LanTech has recommended B is because of the unknowns of doing the full loop as Muffin has, it is still evolving, so all the answers were not provided to us, or have not been answered on that behalf itself. I know other communities are involved in the network, but the information that was provided to us at the time for the cost versus benefit for the information we have is why we are recommending option B.
And Mark, what was in the budget? Or Janine, maybe you know that.
Currently, in the, what we would consider the, um, what are we, contracting services line item, that was including some work that the, the police department, they have some continuing contracts for some of their IT-related items, and so this is added to that line item, and that was the, what I had shifted up there, as I'm referring to in item number two on the front page, increase this line item by ten thousand dollars.
And that was in the budget, or you're asking to increase?
Uh, what's in the budget right now includes this.
Includes, alright. Alder Holmquist?
Maybe I'm not reading correctly, so if I incorrectly make an assumption, please let me know. If I look at option B?
Yes.
The only connection that we're utilizing, what we paid for in Muffin infrastructure, is to connect the library to the Public Works Department.
Through the process of the Muffin network, you guys connected a fiber line from the, which is, which is signified on here as a Manono, Manono private fiber. That was also part of your investment into the Muffin network, but with that being so localized, you guys do not need to pay a Muffin fee for that. It was just, uh, because it's this building, City Hall, and the senior center, it was all localized. You didn't have to go out onto the actual Muffin network itself to get that connection.
We just put in our own infrastructure.
Right.
And we own that.
Right.
What about the connection between here and the Public Works Department?
That is the one that just went in, and that does utilize part of the Muffin's infrastructure. So therefore, there are fees associated with that.
And do we know, like ballpark, how much of that line are we using of Muffin compared to, could we have just made that our own?
What, what, what you are using from Muffin is the connection outside of this building. From there, it goes to Manona Drive, down Manona Drive to Broadway, and over to Broadway. We added a fiber line from Broadway up to the Public Works Building, is what was put in by us installing the fiber. But from, basically from Broadway up Manona Drive, down Nichols, that is all Muffin infrastructure. Thanks.
Further questions? Alright, oh, Alder Bussie?
So just to make sure that I understand, you're recommending B, and the costs associated in B are in the budget that was presented to us at the committee of the whole. And the annual fees of sixty-eight forty basically cover the rental of the line from the library to Public Works?
Correct.
Actually, can I clarify to that?
Yeah.
As outlined on page, you know, that has the option B on it, this is kind of an all-encompassing, so it's not only the, the Muffin rental, the line, the service fees, but I'm adding what we would pay charter for those monthly fees, as well as any overhead fees for line locates, like Digger's Hotline and whatnot. Those are included in that number, so it's an all-encompassing.
Twenty-four hundred is the fee for Muffin, basically. Charter's twenty-six forty?
Actually, both the overhead and monthly fees are Muffin fees.
Okay, and then what do we get for forty-two hundred dollars a year? That, or that, what does Public Works get for forty-two hundred bucks a year?
Right now, we currently have a VPN connection, which is extremely slow. With the Muffin network, we, we will now have a gigabit transfer data rate between Public Works and here. It would be like if they were, just like they were sitting in, here in the library, or over at, at City Hall, the connection speed would be the same. We would not lose that data rate from here over to Public Works.
And the cost for these would be in perpetuity, or, because we don't own it, we're renting that every year?
Correct.
And the owner, that is the University of Wisconsin, but the city of Madison is the implementer of Muffin, is that correct?
I think it's the other way around.
Yeah, I believe it's the other way around.
This, no, university's not doing installations and anything, right?
They had secured the grant.
The university secured the grant?
Yes.
Right, that's what I meant. They're the, they're, they're the licensee of Muffin, they're the driver behind Muffin. Power pole climbers and stuff that they subletted to the city of Madison is implementing Muffin.
Yes.
Further questions? Alder O'Connor?
Is Muffin also affecting the speed of connection between the library and City Hall, or the City Hall and the community center? And hasn't, hasn't that fiber upgraded your connection amongst these buildings also?
Right, as, because, if you, if you look on both diagrams, they show, uh, Mano, the city of Manono, private fiber, that is that connection. That has no effect on Muffin whatsoever, we do not pay any fees to Muffin, because they are all directly connected to each other using the fiber that City of Manona put in place.
But I guess my question is, is the only benefit the city of Manona is getting from, from being connected to Muffin, connecting the library to the Public Works Building?
With Plan B, yes.
Okay, so that didn't improve any of our other connections up here?
Because I thought they were installing fiber over here at some point, weren't they?
Prior, prior to us installing the City of Manono private fiber, you guys were using a basic copper connection.
Okay.
Which was a hundred megabit speed, I'm, I'm sorry, ten megabit speed. When you guys installed the fiber, you guys went from ten megabit to a hundred megabit.
And is that fiber connected to Muffin at some point, or no?
It currently is connected just outside this building, but it is not connected in the fact that we are connected to the one gigabit, all-encompassing fiber network.
Okay, but our speed is much improved?
Our speed internally-
Reliability and-
Has been improved and is going to be improved when we get the new switches installed that take advantage of that one gigabit connection.
So eventually, we'll have a connection to the Muffin network, is that what you're saying?
That's what we're proposing to you guys, how you guys want to-
How we do that, okay.
Yes, but internally, these three buildings are currently connected and at, are, and are on the fiber.
Right, but eventually, they'll have the connection to the gigabyte.
That's what we're here to ask you guys to make a decision on.
But I'm just, I just think because this diagram kind of makes it look like the only advantage of Muffin is connecting the library to the Public Works Building, and it's really more than that, depending on what we choose.
Right, and that, the, what we've been talking about is option B, and that is only connecting to Public Works. For the estimated yearly cost of the sixty-eight-
Right.
Hundred dollars. Now, to get on to the full Muffin network, to get the one gigabit internet speed from WISNET, and to be on that full fiber backbone, that is an additional fee, and we don't have all the information from Muffin.
And that would be option A.
That would be option A.
So eventually-
Eventually-
May go that route.
You, you guys can absolutely go that way. What is proposed in the budget now, they have splicing that needs to be done, and they are going to splice it so that either way we go, we just have to, you know, give them, say, hey, yep, we want to go to the full fiber network now, and it's just a, a couple of devices that are needed to do that, plus the increase in monthly fees.
Correct, thank you.
So, that, that was kind of my question, but to clarify, option A, which adds a cost of forty-eight hundred dollars roughly, is what you're estimating full implementation of Muffin access? I mean, is that what this is? Or are you saying, you just don't know, but if we wanted to create this loop with a few other things on the Muffin network, we do know that it would add forty-eight hundred dollars? Again, I'm, I'm rounding, but-
Right.
It's forty-eight hundred more for Plan A than it is for Plan B?
Approximately, yes.
On an annual basis, correct?
Right, that recurs, so, and that's for the privilege of connecting with, I see the, the Madison police training.
Yep, actually, that, that connects to the full Muffin network, which includes Sun Prairie, Fitchburg, Middleton, the two-twenty-two building where, excuse me, the main backbone of the fiber network is, which is a direct link to Chicago.
Right.
So there's, there's a main fiber line that runs from Madison to Milwaukee to Chicago.
Right.
And by connecting option A, you are then in that full network. So you can almost literally put a device anywhere and, on that network and have connectivity. But there is a, a fee associated with that.
Can I piggyback to Alder Spate's and Alder O'Connor's discussions? Actually, it's not forty-eight hundred annual, Alder Spate, because the first number difference is a capital. That's a one-time fee, so it's twenty-five hundred. Things can change a little bit, but are you comfortable that next year, when, I'm sure we're going to want to go to Muffin at some point in time, when it's working properly, that it'll just be twenty-five hundred dollars annual to go up? Or are we exposing ourselves to some big fee by not taking advantage of going all out now?
From what-
Because what I'm reading is, we'll wait, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, we'll save it now, and we'll just spend it a year from now, but I want to just confirm that I'm thinking the right way.
From what has been explained to us by Muffin, the, there is no additional fee for joining later versus now. The fees are what the fees are, um, so that if, if next year, fees go up, you, on, on connecting, that fees are going to go up no matter what.
Okay.
So, and, and with, within the Muffin network, everybody pays the same fee. So Fitchburg would pay the same fee, so there is no, from what's been explained, there is no penalty for that.
Good. I'm fine, then, then you make the call, Alder Spate? Just one more clarification. We've talked about the fact that we've increased our internet connection speed within our city buildings by tenfold, correct? Or ten times faster?
We've increased our network speed, not our internet speed.
Okay. So, building to building, computer to computer, we've, we're ten times faster, but then once we go out online, it's the same connection? Is that true? It's a charter connection, correct?
Right now, our, our charter connection is at twenty megabit.
Twenty. Okay. And so that's what we're comparing, twenty megabit to one gigabit for connection? And that's, a gigabit's a thousand, correct?
A thousand megabits.
Right, so, okay. Alder Bussie?
But on this option too, it says upgrade bandwidth pro fifty megabits, so we're going to go from, option B is going to take us from twenty to fifty, is that correct?
Correct. So it's going to be faster. But, oh, we're near a gigabit speeds, but, I mean, it's going to be better, it's-
It's going to be better than what's there.
Twice as fast as what we have now.
Almost.
If it runs that through, 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 through. Alright, I'm comfortable, thank you, I appreciate the follow-up on this, and it sounds like it's a work in progress.
It, it truly is.
Okay. Is anyone on Muffin yet, now?
Yes.
Any community, Middleton or Fitchburg?
Middleton and Fitchburg and Sun Prairie are all on Muffin.
So how, what say they?
I actually have not talked to any of them to their input. The people at Muffin were planning on being here tonight, but they would be able to answer that question more.
I'll be with them Wednesday, my counterparts from those cities, so I'll ask them. Mr. Mayor? Could I, just one final question? We're increasing our budget for this, for information technology, we're almost-
We're almost doubling our budget, and I know it's long overdue and we've got to raise the bar. But another way to look at this is for 2,500, and I know we have a capital investment we would have to make, but for 2,500, we would be increasing our speed on the internet by 20 or 50 times, or 20 times. I guess we're going up to 50, then 50 to 1,000 is 20 times faster for city staff interacting with the internet, correct?
Approximately, yes.
At a cost of 2,500, and then every year an additional 2,500, maybe more? We don't know, I know you said, we don't know.
Right, additional on top of the already 2,500.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, and, but at this point, your recommendation is that we stick with Plan B? Or, I mean, it seems to me like we're spending a lot of money, and for a little bit more, I mean, we're really talking less than 10%, and annually, we're talking a 5% increase for a cost of IT. We would significantly improve the speed of our service, and speed is everything in internet, I mean...
Yeah, the bottom line is, why aren't you recommending that we spend the 2,500 and do that this year?
At this point, because we don't have enough information. They have not, Muffin has not provided us enough information for the full cost of that infrastructure, and they just haven't given us all the fees. So for, at least at this point, we are recommending connect what you guys have already in place. Make sure all your buildings are up and running before we go and connect the full network. So that way, we at least are using the investment that you guys already have made to connect that Public Works Building.
Sounds like a plan to me, Alder Wood?
Do you have an idea when we, you might have more complete information? Might it be within the next three to six months, or sometime, sometime in 2014? That you'd have the information to recommend?
Absolutely, yes.
I guess I'd keep that in mind, that if we go with option B, we may want to look at a budget amendment at some point in 2014.
Further questions? Thank you. Don't you know some Muffin people? Where is he? Any other department heads wishing to speak? Chief? Anything you wanted to add? It's the season. All right, Alder Thomas?
I have a question for the chief.
Okay. Sure, no pun intended.
I heard lots of people talking about the community services officer and what the 20th officer would be doing. And I'm relatively certain you know how I feel about, that I clearly support the 20th officer, but I think that there's going to be speeding on Manona Drive, we need backup when we got guys, guys and gals, when we have officers out at Walmart, and that while the community service may be a part of that job, that that will not strictly, am I, so, am I correct in thinking that?
Yes, you're correct in thinking that. When we did the staffing study, it also forced me to look at our statistics a little bit closer, and I worked with our IT person through our MPSIS group, which is out of Fitchburg, and we did some, we ran some numbers, and we compared when our big call out is. And it's really Monday through Friday between like 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. That's when we really need those extra bodies, and that's where the primary time would be for that extra officer to handle calls, to back up people, and also when time permits, to do community relationships.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Any other questions? Did you catch the bank robber yet?
No.
I would think you wouldn't be letting a car without license plates be driving up and down the streets.
Things like that happen.
One observation do we, for those who might not be aware, but Anchor Bank was robbed this afternoon, and suspects at large, and the three photos, although the resolution was beautiful, there were some of the worst camera angles, not that bank robbers pose, but...
He did that on purpose.
Are those cameras always mounted so high to see the top of a bank robber's head, not their face?
Well, this was a short person too, this person was very short. We were talking about that, it's that he constantly was looking down, he'd never really looked up at the camera, so, as Alder Thomas said, he probably did that on purpose.
He's not a dumb crook.
Yeah, but that's a dumb camera position. You know, if they do one like that camera, you'd see the face versus putting that camera up there. Just an observation, good luck, go get 'em. Any other questions, so the chief, or any of the other department heads? Alder Wood?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for Dan on the street maintenance and construction budget. On page 81 of the budget book, for street salaries and snow and ice salaries, the proposed budget for each is 14,133. And it appears historically, we've always been above that. Is there some explanation? How's that, how do you think that will work this year?
Are you talking the snow and ice salaries?
Well, the street salaries is 14,133, and so is snow and ice.
I know what you're talking about. Basically, this year was, as you know, there's some changes in that department with
Right.
FTEs, so, basically, basically every account in the general fund, you'll notice, if you look at the prior years and this year, you'll see some, it just seemed odd compared to prior years. So basically, we tried to get the matches close as we had based on some data to see, okay, we got 3 point. The FTEs kind of changed, and this is more or less going to be like a test year, but in general, all the total people, if you add up the park salaries, the street, all the, anything in the general fund showed basically 3.5 FTEs, so there will be some tweaking coming up on that, maybe for next year, when we get a better idea, because this is going to be the first year of this. I don't know if that makes sense to you, but in total, this should be fine, we're going to...
Yeah, well, it does, although I guess I do have been in question about snow and ice salaries, because, you know...
We can move around, but it's...
We've been above 14 every year, and quite a bit above in a number of years. So, I mean, obviously, that has to be done. So, just want to make sure that the staff switch changes aren't going to impact the snow, our ability to remove snow and ice.
No, all staff that we have in Public Works is going to be on the snow removal team. Even the full-time employee that we're going to dedicate to parks will be on the snow removal team during the workday and overtime.
Which is equal to the full-time equivalents that were there last year, correct?
Right, right.
Alder Thomas?
Yeah, the bottom line, mine is saying, when you have snow and ice, you put out what you need to take care of the problem. And you may have to flip someone from doing tree trimming, well, you wouldn't do tree trimming in the winter, but something that they would do. The only time we would run into a problem is if it was someone who was assigned to one of the utilities, and then we just have to do a budget amendment. Otherwise, the bottom line stays the same, because it's the public works crew, bottom line.
That's fine, although, I mean, I would hope, I mean, obviously, we track what the employees are doing, and what duties they're assigned to, so that, so we do want to aim for truth in budgeting, so that we have the snow and ice salary line next year, or you say we'll get tweaked from what it is now?
It would, and there's another, one other variable that's throwing it off, because Mark Modaf's salary right now is in one-line account for the general fund, and that's really going to change, I mean, he's going to go specific jobs. So it's, I mean, in total, it's going to be okay, and we'll really tweak that again next year when we do the budget and get that.
I was assured, Alder Wood, that the pieces equal the whole, but because of the changes with Mark's role and responsibilities, and because of the changes with the Parks Department.
It is a little bit weird.
Mark did the best, they did the best of where they think they should be, but I was assured that everybody lines up, the only difference being is the difference in the rates.
Well, yeah, I mean, your general fund's going to shoot tie up pretty close, your utilities should tie out. You're going to have some instances, when, if you have a really bad snow year, you're going to pull some people out of utilities more than you would.
The parks will be under.
Right, well, utilities will be under, and parks will be, but mostly utilities should be under, because you have all these guys that work in utilities, who are going to do the snowplow. That's the one big variable, anything, is a lot of those, a real bad one will pull some of those guys out of utilities more than they should. But that's been taken into account for the current budget.
And I just wanted to clarify too, Mark touched on it somewhat, but we're actually going to have additional manpower given in this budget year, moving forward with, instead of a strict foreman, we're going to have a working foreman with Mr. Modaf's position, so that actually puts some more hands-on projects.
Alder Spate?
Would it be safe to say that past year budgets just haven't tracked these various buckets very well? And so maybe these historical numbers are not as accurate as they are going to be moving forward?
Well, they should be, yeah, they will be moving forward from here on out. But prior years, you had more people, I guess, that would do more general fund activities, and I think we before, utility numbers were a lot lower, so there is a switch in that, so, so you can't really go by those prior numbers. I mean, you should, snow one probably could be updated, but a lot of it's probably in Mark's, and if you had his in there, you'd wash out. But we do, we're shifting more costs into utilities, because there's what, three, three, is it? Right, we've got three, three of the crew that will be doing strictly utilities. Before it was two, 2.5. Right, they, in the past, they've done more general fund function. We've, we have a lot of work to do in our utilities, so that's why we're re, we're shifting the guys pretty much who are dedicated to utilities strictly to utilities. They'll assist street, streets will assist utilities as needed, but for the most part, they're in utilities.
I think you're hearing a concern that we don't want slipping of these good services that you've been providing, and you're assuring us you're not going to, albeit, we might have to tweak which pot, but the total pot should come out, unless it's extraordinary bad snowfall year, and then that would have blown up last year, whatever year, even with the old methodology, but you're comfortable with the staffing levels, and Mark, you're comfortable with how you allocated the...
In total, yeah.
In total. Okay. Further questions? All right, everyone has a schedule for amendments, so everyone knows. Not that you have to make any amendments, but I guess you're allowed to, with the rules. Alder O'Connor?
I've got a few questions from Dan.
Yeah.
I had some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll be able to answer that.
Well, I'm just wondering, you've got a salary line that's increased quite a bit from up to 21, this is on page 69.
Yep.
End of the year from 7,500 to 21,500, and I know you're going to be increasing the hours. How does that relate to the inspection services line? Is it, that's when we contract out?
That's correct.
We're going to contract with McFarland, but so this salaries is for an additional person?
It will be. That's actually the property maintenance nuisance person that will be hiring at 16 hours per week to strictly take care of property maintenance complaints, things along those lines, and potentially assist the building inspector with some of his duties. But, yeah, this would be a new individual that you're referring to.
But it doesn't net out exactly to 16-hour increase, because the building inspector position was originally contracted with McFarland at a 50/50 share basis, but because we've had more permitting needed than McFarland did, they were willing to go to a 60/40 split, so we've been paying 60. So my request to Pat is, I want to add this nuisance position at 16 hours, but if the building inspector doesn't have to do nuisance work, which he's been doing on top of permitting, then we don't need as many hours, so the building inspection will drop down to 50. So, and this person may cost less than, this could almost be a wash. Worst case, it's six hours of increase, net increase of six hours to the budget for the part-time person.
So has someone currently, there's already some money in the budget on this salary line, has someone, how is that being spent now?
We do have, we have a part-time individual that...
Like Barry being part-time?
That, that replace, if Marty, if our building inspector goes on vacation, or if he has to be at training, and then we also have an electrical inspector that comes in as needed, we, our building inspector isn't certified as an electrical inspector. So, need electrical inspection services, that is...
So that is covered under the 21?
Yes, that's covered, yeah.
Additional questions? Pat, did you want to say something about the time?
Oh, yeah, the schedule, I mistake, I sent out a correction email, but I originally put on there for budget amendments due next Wednesday, forgetting that it was a holiday week. So if you could have your budget amendments to Mark and I by next Tuesday, you know, midday or something, that would give us a little time to put them together prior to getting the packets out. We'll be getting the packets out next Wednesday prior to the holiday, given that the next council meeting follows that weekend, so if you could have your amendments to me next Tuesday, that'd be great.
And again, you don't have to do it, that's not a requirement.
Really?
To mess with the mayor, just say it. But I look forward to a number of them. All right? Any questions? Okay, then we are moving off into closed session. Item F is convening in closed session under Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, par. F1, par. C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Two items that we want to discuss this evening is the city administrator's employment agreement amendment and the city attorney's contract renewal. Is there a motion to convene in closed session?
I'm ready.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we will go into closed session. This won't be long.
Eric, you should do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forget that. Roll call, please.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
All right, so we are going into closed session. This should be brief, for those of you who want to hang around. If you are leaving, since we're done so quick tonight, I urge, Eric, I don't know if he's still here, but today is funding to the library. If you have a coupon for Buffalo Wild Wings, they are raising funds for the Manona Public Library up until midnight. Some of us will be joining you if you're heading out there shortly, so they are making donations to the library, which helps reduce taxes. Eric, anything you want to add on that? Can we use library money to finance a police officer? Huh, okay, all right, thank you, everyone. I would like to reconvene in open session under Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, par. 2. Moving on to item 8, this consideration of resolution 13-11-1943 approving an amendment to the employment agreement with the city administrator. I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Is a motion to approve?
This is new business.
Is that new business?
Oh, this is new, this is still new business? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's been over 35 times.
You want to suspend the votes?
That's totally up to you. I don't know that it makes a difference one way or the other, because the raise wouldn't be in effect until after the first... the other, because the raise wouldn't be effective until the first year, but.
I'll move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Is the motion to suspend the rules, take this out of order, and then there's been a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
Motion for approval, and a second. Alder Wood?
I would just offer as a friendly amendment to the contract amendment that was in our packets on paragraph two, to replace the words "other non-represented employees" with the words "department heads."
Same as that, that was done at personnel and finance. Further discussion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
His motion is second to amend the wording.
I'll second his motion.
You'll second the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the amended motion has been put forth, is there, I guess it's up for, is there discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Pat, congratulations, you're stuck here a few more years.
Thank you.
Good thing. Next is consideration of resolution thirteen dash eleven dash nineteen forty-four approving a contract renewal with city attorney William S. Cole. This is first reading, does anyone want to move this along?
I would, I am, based on the fact that we're, we're hoping to get some more information on.
Oh.
His malpractice insurance cost and so forth, maybe, you know, we probably still won't have it by the next time we meet, but we might if we wait.
So, if you could pass on, Pat, it was exactly the same as that personnel and finance, this body would just like to know how his two insurance policies are sorting out, but the full intent is to approve the increase at least for year one, with the discussion moving on to years two and three.
Okay.
Further date.
Yeah.
And if all that information comes in before the next meeting, who knows what might happen. Okay, moving on, there's no, is there any miscellaneous business? Alder Spade?
Mr. Mayor, I just realized that in my Thanksgiving travels, I am not going to be in town on the night of December second, I will be flying into town during the time of our meeting.
Here gets the vote on the budget, tiebreaker.
You don't get to vote. If, you know, I would.
Phone in, no.
Well, yeah, I would if I could, but I.
Anyone else gonna have difficulties on the second? I have an invitation to be at a Christmas party at the governor's mansion, and I turned down to be here with this illustrious body, so.
If you'd like to go.
Yeah, didn't I do you a favor?
We could meet on the, if we met on that Tuesday night, we could all be here that way.
I'll do, I'll do whatever the will of this body, let me just.
I assume we could all be here, I shouldn't say that.
All right, let's just look real quick.
Park's giving me a draw-up, but it's bad.
The Tuesday, I'm unsure at this point.
I would love the one on the Tuesday. You're questionable?
I'm questionable at this moment, but I can find out and.
Okay, but you're for sure gone on Monday, so we have one questionable on Tuesday, a secure miss on Monday, so would it be okay if we would say Tuesday? All right, okay.
Well, that's assuming, I mean, you can't, if Brian can't make it, then you can't hold it to Tuesday.
All right, that's fair enough.
I mean, you can't, you can't.
We could tentatively book it and.
You could tentatively book it, and I'll verify.
Tonight, we're saying Tuesday, and you'll wait to hear.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
I would love that.
It would be nice to have everyone here for that. Uh, any other miscellaneous business? Seeing none, moving on to reports committee's commissions. Janine, you must think you have something to share, don't you? All good?
Uh, thank you, a five-minute update coming from Sustainability Committee, kind of a, where we are in the sustainability plan, and where we see it going, and perhaps some feedback of things that you would like to see. So, we're still, we've got a bit more work to do before it officially comes before council, but as a courtesy, we'd just like to kind of let you know what's going on. And, uh, as per my notes, a really quick recap, back in May of this year, we hired Madison Environmental Group as a consultant to assist the city in developing sustainability plan. That followed, of course, an RFP process where we did put it out for public, and a number of folks did respond, and we interviewed, and then selected Madison Environmental Group. And throughout the months, the summer months, the Sustainability Committee and Madison Environmental Group worked with city staff, city committees to gather information, kind of helped create a baseline and figure out where the city is and where it wants to go. And out of that came some concepts, some goals, some visions, all very preliminary. On September eighteenth, there was an all-committee meeting, and thank you to the, to the committee folks that did attend that, it was a very, very good, very productive meeting, took a lot from that, went back to the drawing board, restructured our goals and our visions, and then presented that at a public meeting that took place on October second. Excellent venue, had a lot of participation, brought back some more great ideas from the community on things that they'd like to see. November eleventh, we went before the Plan Commission as kind of one of the first steps, starting to go out to the committees and start to get some input and think about things that they wanna see, because this is, we're working together, we're asking what we can do for you when we're going to the committees. This is for the community. As I mentioned, throughout November and December, we'll be going before committees. In January, our goal is to present a draft to city council. The key in that phrase is draft, we still have a lot of work to do, and we anticipate to continue developing that through two thousand fourteen, because a really important part of this is the public process, is public input from our community. And in, in conjunction, we've had some really great information that we've taken from the stra- the strategic plan development, a lot of great ideas, a lot of things that came from the community and the surveys and that, so we're assessing all of that and building it as we move forward. So, that's my update, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'll be back in a couple of weeks.
Do you have a couple other things you wanna add? In terms of today's news, where we were this afternoon?
Oh, my goodness, it's, it's very exciting, last couple of months earlier this year, for the Cove Channel project, the stormwater replacement there, as well as Fireman's Park, there was a public meeting today, an announcement by Joe Perici that Monona has been awarded grants for both of these projects, so we're waiting for the official paper.
Seventy-five percent reimbursement?
And we're talking probably, fingers crossed, over two hundred thousand dollars in grants that we'll receive for both of those.
Again, in the capital budget, we put forth two more projects with the hope, the nudge, nudge, wink, wink, that we'll keep proposing if they keep helping. So, we are knocking these off, and it's getting a lot of anxiety. And then, did you wanna mention where you'll be in January for dinner?
Uh, yes, the city of Monona, the city of Monona has been awarded the most innovative renewable energy project in two thousand thirteen for the solar project, so Renew Wisconsin will, will give us that award at their January banquet.
Congratulations, you've done a wonderful job, and I hope Sustainability Committee is thinking what the year of two thousand and fourteen will be, because I'm, I'm getting tapped out of years of anniversaries, years of water, and years of stormwater, so I'm hoping you come up with one more.
The year of the sun.
And to the point, it could be with solar, but to the point where one gentleman who I didn't know who attended this press conference today just was gushing about Monona, and I said, "So, you live in Monona?" "No, no." Went on the water walk.
And you said, "Why not?"
My tip of the hat, please get those solar panels turned on.
Aye, Captain. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spade?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder Thomas?
I have no report, 'cause I assume you're going to congra- to do seats at the football team.
What football? The Packers? No, I'm not gonna, no. No, go ahead, no, please, you do.
No, well, what I know, they're playing this, they're playing for the state title on, on Friday morning.
Friday morning, tickets are available.
Camp Randall. Yes.
I, I am not a foot- football fan, but I know, but I know these things about.
Wonderful, and the girls' swim team did very well. Alder Bussie?
The Facilities Committee did a review of the one at the Dream, Dream Park Shelter, and there's gonna be a follow-up meeting in early December.
Perfect, everything, from what I understand, is going well on that, correct? Do you think?
That'll be a follow-up meeting early December.
All right. City clerk?
Um, candidate packets are available in the clerk's office, Alder's, Holmquist, Thomas, and O'Connor are up for, their positions are up for reelection, reelection, I said, and, um, so, but packets are available for candidates. Circulation can begin December first, we do need to have your campaign registered with me before you start circulating papers.
Oops. City administrator, Mark?
Um, just a couple of quick updates, one is we did have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Jankowski on this strategic plan today with the department heads during our regular bimonthly meeting, and we went over some of the, the major objectives of the plan, as well as some brainstorming with some other ideas on how to make some amendments to that prior to bringing back to this body. As a follow-up to that meeting, we do have an internal team made up of four department heads, three department heads and myself, that will be compiling some recommendation and bringing them back to the city council in December. So, we are behind the scenes, making progress on the strategic plan, and we'll keep you posted. And then, also, as, as kind of a kudos to the city of Monona, is the, I've been requested by McFarland to serve on an economic development, or to sit on an economic development panel this Wednesday, as they're looking at ways that they can improve their economic development initiatives in McFarland, and they wanna know all of our secrets here in Monona, so I'll let some of them out of the bag, but not the important ones. Former mayor and current state representative, Call, is also, will be on that panel too, so looking forward to that with some, some of our neighbors' chamber representatives and, and some of their councilmen.
Good, very exciting. Alder Thomas has already mentioned, congratulations to Monona Grove High School, both the girls' swim team, and especially the boys' football team, undefeated boys' football team, which is opposing another undefeated team Friday morning for the Division III state championship. Congratulations, and I gave Mr. Foley, Jim Foley, a call this morning, if you haven't driven the drive, my goodness, it's just, I'm beaming, just, it is so wonderful, and people are driving safely, and I think it's bedded down now for the winter well, with the center median to be, you know, fixed by mid-May, will be completed, I've asked the city administrator to find some shekels to allow a party to throw a celebration, I think a five-year project of that magnitude deserves some sort of event, so we're thinking mid-May to celebrate perhaps a picnic or something at the high school new parking lot, when that's fully completed, and I guess we're up for running for more awards on that one, and to the person, I hear nothing but good comments from individuals, in spite of Madison not allowing us to continue all the great design features of phases one and two. As it relates to business development, our third annual Build Monona will be taking place from four to six P.M. on December tenth. The location will be finalized tomorrow, I hope it will be at the community center, and beverages, adult beverages, and snacks will be provided, and that has gotten to the point, last year we had to do it in two, locations are limited to have it with the size, but the Madison Area Builders Association approached me and asked if they could help promote that event, because they have a number of members who want to be there, so they're gonna work with the Chamber of Commerce, again, this city, the city council spends five thousand dollars for that, but I think it's been well received and we're bearing the fruit. Our development scene is quite robust, a lot of things going on, and I think we'll have good news within the next week on Trista, which has been so important, with that seems to be back on the front burner again as of this morning, so in a positive way, with a restaurant, so, a good restaurant, so all is good there, and what a great city. Just one sidebar, Pat said that the reinvention consultants, Walter Jankowski, met with Walter, called me over the weekend, and one thing he shared, but he said, "The thing that has, one of the things that has most impressed him about this is the sustainability of this community, that it doesn't talk the talk, it walks." Because he's doing this now for lacrosse, he's done Oshkosh, you know, he's done about five Wisconsin cities so far, everyone aspires to do it, and he said, "You know, you're not really going over the top on it, you just do it, and it's a thread through everything." So, I think that's to, this council's to be commended, and this city's to be commended for that kind of approach, so, thank you, Janine, even though she's not here. With that, we have appointments, two appointments, Mr. Jim Keck, who just recently completed the Madison Marathon, is moving to Mass Transit Authority effective May of two, effective immediately to fill in through May of two thousand and fourteen, and Dale Ganzer is being appointed to the Plan Commission effective January first. If you don't remember who Dale is, Dale is the designer, the owner of the Femrite New Urbanism Housing.
And Openwood Studios, a long time and own a business.
And Openwood, yep, all of, all the signs, the sandblasted signs you see in all the communities, so. With that, is there a motion for approval of the appointments?
So moved.
Is there a motion second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye, is there a motion for adjournment?
Move adjournment?
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings adjourned, thank you, everyone. Oh, one other sidebar, which is very exciting too, I think Thursday we get the first sneak peek, or some of us will get a sneak peek of the new website, so hopefully that is well, well underway, getting to completion, and if you didn't, um, this is why.